I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Anderson Economic Council for Thursday, August 11th, to order. Everyone please stand for the invocation from Council and Stevenson and the Pledge of Allegiance by Council Lady Cruz.
Dear Lord, please be with all of City Council and government officials that we can make the best decision to keep this city great and also stay with the citizens of Anderson. And lastly, stay with our Olympians so we can keep going with world domination. Amen.
Amen. On that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the row.
Counselor Bell.
Here.
Counselor Cole.
Here.
Counselor Graham.
Here.
Counselor Dixon.
I'm here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Newman.
Yes ma'am.
President Bibbs.
Here.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Second.
Counselor Bell.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Dixon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
President Bibbs.
Yes, the minutes have been approved for the regular meeting of July 14th. We will now go to Communications Director Winkler, please.
Council President, members of the City Council, you have the monthly report updated in front of you. We're moving along at about 13 leads a month as far as average is concerned, so that'll put us a little ahead of next year or of last year. On the last page, you have the monthly totals. You will see the project that's being considered for abatement tonight listed on there at $18.5 million, 18 and a half million dollars. That brings our total up to $422,451,741 as far as investments. Total commitments are $45 million over 10 years. The return on that investment is $68 million, 68 and a half million, so about $23 million to the good in the black, and that gives you about a 50 percent return, all of your principal, plus about a 50 percent return on your investment. Questions?
President.
Bibbs.
Yes, sir.
Where is a stand on the economic project for the old Edgewood Plaza?
We currently have a couple opportunities that we're working with, working with the administration to get those to the point where they can be presented to the Redevelopment Commission, and then from the Redevelopment Commission, they would come forward to the City Council for consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
President.
Yes, ma'am.
The new company that's coming in, I don't know how to pronounce it. It's Valina. It's Valina.
I tell Valina.
I got the first complaint today.
Uh-oh, okay.
In that neighborhood. I'm already starting campaigning.
Okay.
And she's saying the neighbors say it's gonna have an odor.
Not that I'm aware of.
I said, "Well, I thought we discussed that."
We did. We did.
Can I tell them that, assure them that there's not gonna be an odor in that neighborhood?
You can assure them that that's something that we're working, we're watching very closely.
Okay, let's be on record for that, then.
Okay.
All right.
Other questions?
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
They wanna, they wanna smell something, let them go water pollution.
Well, they're afraid that's gonna be what it's gonna be. They're calling it a sewer plant. That's what the neighbors over in that area are calling it, a sewer plant.
Okay. Feel free to steer them my way if you want.
I'll give them your name.
I'd be glad to sit down and talk with them.
They'll take our loan.
Okay, I'd be glad to sit down and talk with them.
I will. I'm not gonna have them on my back.
Not a sewer plant. Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I just wanna compliment the Economic Development Department and the City Administration as a whole, along with the Talpolino, on the groundbreaking yesterday. That was an excellent ceremony, and it sounds like this is a terrific company with growth potential, and we're all, we're thankful for that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. The cookies that you have are from the Talpolino ground opening, so you recognize the yellow rooster. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keep out the good work. Okay, the Anderson City Council would now like to recognize the 7th grade Anderson Heat Basketball Boys and Girls Team. I will turn it over to Counsel Lady Davis to do the honors.
As you know, we have in our community, a lot of great parents that give up a lot of their time to be coaches and support kids in the community, and at this time, I'm gonna bring up my granddaughter that's gonna introduce the coaches. She dedicates, she works 40 hours a week and then I don't know how many hours on the weekend taking kids to basketball games and basketball practice, and I'm gonna, her name is Elektra Young, and she's a workaholic, and she's gonna introduce the basketball team. You might have them come up, Elektra, and stand up in front. Have the girls come up. You come forward for.
When I say your name, come up here in the front.
Yeah, 'cause we got the TV camera on you.
I didn't tell them that hard.
You forgot to tell them that? You've gotta give your name and address, Elektra.
Okay, my name is Elektra Young.
Put the microphone up.
Okay.
We know you're not bashful.
I know, but, um, a little bit right now, no. My name is Elektra Young. I live at 3736 Hamilton Place here in Anderson. As she said, my son is actually part of this organization. He did not go on these, with these teams that we're talking about tonight, but I feel very honored that my son is part of this organization because how amazing it is. Coaches Curtis Lewis and Courtney Doc, which I'm gonna have stand here in a moment, started this organization three years ago. It's Anderson Heat and Anderson Lady Heat, part of, they also have another team named of D-Time Athletics. They sacrifice so much time, money, energy, they give up family life for some amazing young men and women in our community. They not only are coaching them in basketball, they're coaching them in how to be good citizens, good students, good members of our community, and we all know that we need more and more people that can help our youth to be positive role models. I know that these are dads to some of these kids as well. They are surrogate fathers, they're friends, they get to take care of them. They, as they, as she said, "I do help give rides, but nothing like they give." They give rides, they give time, they give food, and they are two amazing men that I definitely think are giving back so much to this community, and they're only growing. Three years ago, they started with one team. We now have three boys teams and two girls teams. Next year is gonna grow even more. All of these young men and women that are here today traveled or qualified high enough in the state competition for USSA basketball that they were invited to go to national competitions with the best in the nation. The boys traveled to Georgia and the girls traveled to Tennessee in July. They are all going into 8th grade now, and they represented our city, our state, very, very well. And, you know, back in the day, basketball used to be the thing here, and I think with these young men and women, the future of basketball is very bright in this city. I know we'd all love to see that back. I mean, we live in Indiana, basketball state, so, but it's, it's very amazing that they qualified, they give up a lot of time, they have to balance their grades, which is important to this organization. They can't play if they don't have good grades, as well as the practice and the dedication and the sacrifice of some other things that young men and women do. So, I'm very thankful that you guys are allowing them to come in front of you today just to be recognized for the accomplishments that they had, and I'm gonna introduce each of these ladies and men, and then I'll introduce the coaches and if they have anything to say, so. I'm gonna start with the girls, who are now 8th graders, and I said they're, this is a recreational travel basketball team, but they're all students at Highland as well.
Have them walk down in front of you there.
Okay.
And turn around, turn around, those of them.
Well, I'm gonna start with the girl. Okay, so you're gonna go around the back then and come around to me, okay? So, on the girls' team for the Lady Heat, Anderson Lady Heat, Vivi Williams.
She can walk down here in front.
Oh, you go this way.
She can walk this way, that way she don't have to go all the way around. Just have them all come up here at one time, Elektra.
Oh, have them all come up at once and then introduce names? Okay, everyone just come up and then I'll say your name.
All the girls come up.
It's the girls first, standing right here.
He's tall.
Sorry. Okay, so we have Vivi Williams, Zara Doc, and Kayla Williams. We do have some other girls that traveled as well, just unfortunately weren't able to meet, be here tonight. They actually placed second in the state and then traveled on to nationals, so very big accomplishment for them, and we're very excited for the future of the Lady Heat and future of Anderson Girls Basketball, so. Okay, and now for the boys, Heat, Anderson Heat. If you guys all wanna come up here the same way and then I'll introduce you. It doesn't matter, just you can come up this way, whichever way is easier.
Boy, they look bigger in 8th grade, don't they? He just elbowed you.
Just 'cause I can't quite see over the tallness down here, 'cause I'm a short eight, when I say your name, just kinda wave your hand. I'm just gonna go down the list. So, we have Curtis Lewis, who is number 23, Marcus Armstrong, who is number 1, Trey King, who could not be here tonight because he did move out of state with his family, is number 11, but he was a part of the team that traveled. Oh, 24. Oh, am I off? I am, my bad. Okay, let me put my finger here. I gotta do what I gotta do at work here. Okay, Keonte Walker, who is number 11, Mason Sutton, who's number 30, Tyreus Smith, who is number 3, Matthew Winkler, who is number 5, Braden Kovacs, number 35, Daylin Kelly, who's number 2, Jay Jones, who is number 20, Romelo Williams, who's number 15, and then we have our two managers for all of the Heat teams, Cameron Lewis and Colin Louis, Lewis? I'm sorry, you guys wanna stand up and join 'em? So, and this is the boys, Anderson Heat Basketball Teams.
All right.
And then, of course, none of this would be possible, it wouldn't have ever been started without the sacrifice and the dedication and the loyalty to all these young men and women as Curtis Lewis and Courtney Doc.
All right.
Let's have them speak.
Yeah.
We'll give you 10 minutes each.
Okay, as she said, my name is Curtis Lewis. I'm the head coach of these young men. I'm very proud of what they, what they have accomplished in the past three years. They've been with me since they was in the 5th grade. They've grown so much as young men on and off the court. Pretty much everybody here that you see is honor roll students.
Wow.
They work hard in the classroom. As well, as well on the basketball court, so I appreciate the time that you guys allowed us to be here and to meet you, and God bless.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Good evening, I'm Courtney Doc, and I'm also a coach. You know, I had a vision, you know, because me and his kids, you know, it wasn't no basketball, basically, you know, for, for the youth around here. I've been here, I'm not originally from here, from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I've been here 14 years, so, and I've been raising my daughter since birth, and so the thing of it is, when she started, got into basketball, kinda fell in just by helping out coaching in the 3rd grade, when she was in the 4th grade, and so, and then she got into 5th, and then, you know, we, me and Curtis got together, we just kinda met through basketball, and we just kinda clicked. We had the same philosophy, the same vision, and what we wanted to do with these kids, and we had the same intensity on the court as far as how, the style of play that we liked. We kinda, we kinda mimic each other on the court when we coaching, but, and that's a plus, and it's also trickles down into these kids, you know, because it gets me emotional because I love the game, but also being a parent, you know, you see it in around here, you know, and since I moved here, it was something more to do for the kids besides just hanging out. You know, I'm from the inner city, the projects myself, and I know what it's like, and I've seen a lot of guys that I ran with, you know, they fall off the wayside. They was good basketball players, but the home life wasn't there, and so a lot of these kids, some of them don't have that, and so we tried to provide that with, with me and him, you know, sometime I'm dad, sometime I'm parent, I'm friend, and we do the same thing, and, you know, I'm proud of each and every one of these kids because they, they work hard. They work hard, you know, and it's just like any, they all getting into preteen right now, and, but, you know, and, and I'm ready for that challenge, me and Curtis, I'm sure we are. It's, it's hard sometimes, but, you know, if we're dedicated and committed, they would be dedicated. We gotta live by examples as parents, as grownups and adults, and so, you know, I'm proud of them. They got the girls and, and these young men right here, so, you know, and real quick, I'm gonna just, our mission statement, our primary objective is impacting youth in the game of life. Our hope is that each athlete is able to improve their life skills and basketball skills, as well as become team player at home, in school, and on the basketball court. Our commitment is to provide a positive age-based developmental basketball program for the children of the communities we serve. We are dedicated to helping these kids reach their full potential as people. And another thing, you know, it just, we do have challenges, you know, I'm gonna just put that out there, you know, it's just as far as like gym time and all that stuff like that, so we try to raise money for that, and sometime it's hard, but, you know, I know as a community, if we pull together, we can make that happen, and, you know, and, you know, I appreciate y'all letting us have time to talk and recognizing these kids. I'm sure it means a lot to them, as well as me and Curtis and all these parents out here. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council.
Thank you.
For the kids, we're gonna go into our regular council business, so they can leave now, or they can stay for the boring evening. Okay, well, we'll just give you some time to.
Congratulations.
Thank you for bringing them.
Thank you.
Hey, Kenneth, Kenneth, you got a little bit of grandma in her?
Yeah.
Huh?
Can I stand?
Did you understand what I said? I said, "Does she have a little bit of grandma in her?"
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with introduction of ordinances with the first reading approved.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request that we here vote on ordinance 1516 for its third reading.
Second.
I'm sorry, for its second reading tonight, yes.
I'll second that, please.
All right.
Ordinance 1516 and ordinance amending ordinance number 815 fixing the salaries and benefits for employees of the Parks, Cats, Traffic Engineering, Sewer and Street Department of the City of Anderson, Indiana.
President Bibbs.
Yes, ma'am.
Member of the Council, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Linda Wiley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Wiley.
You might have to lean up. Is it still on?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm Linda Wiley, HR Specialist for the Human Resource Department for the city. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Council?
I'll call for a question.
Any questions from the audience?
All right. I'll call for the question.
Question's been called.
Counselor Bell.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Dixon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
President Bibbs.
Yes, ordinance 1516 has passed its second reading.
We're gonna give a third reading tonight, so we'd like to introduce for consideration ordinance 1516 for a third and final reading.
Oh, I'd like to second that, sorry.
Ordinance 1516 and ordinance amending ordinance number 815 fixing the salaries and benefits for employees of the Parks, Cats, Traffic Engineering, Sewer and Street Department of the City of Anderson, Indiana.
And, yes, Mrs. Wiley.
That should've been the second reading, shouldn't it?
Yes, question.
Now, this, um, when you say fixing the salaries, does this affect their?
No, this, just a point of clarification, this was just a typo that was found.
Correct.
So, this is not affecting their contracts or anything like that?
No, ma'am, it's just correcting the typo that was found.
A typo? And it affected all these different departments?
No, there were only two. It was just. That it affected.
What did it affect?
On attachment 1, under the Sewer Department, for the 2015 and 2016 rate, just under the labor, that very top position, those were off each $2. The amount that you are looking at, the 15.7463 and the 15.9627, those are the correct amounts. The typo was that it read 17.7463 and 17.9627, which would make it higher than your most skilled or classified or certified employee. And the same thing on the Street Department, or excuse me, the Street Department, Truck Driver Finisher. Just those two positions are the only errors that were made.
So, that's all we're doing is correcting those two errors?
Yes, and it was actually paid correctly, it's just wrong on the.
Okay, I remember.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Council? Any questions from the audience? Question's been called.
Counselor Bell.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Dixon.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
And President Bibbs.
Yes, ordinance 1516 has passed its council and awaits the consideration of the mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move for the third reading on ordinance 1716.
Oh, we missed something.
No, first, I'm sorry.
You're getting ahead of yourself, my friend.
Yes, I am.
It's actually Counselor Cole.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to bring to the Council consideration 1616 to be amended, please.
Do you wanna read the amendment, Jennifer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I haven't had the second yet.
Second.
All right, there we go.
Now, you want me to read it? Okay. An ordinance establishing a deposit and investment policy for the City of Anderson, Indiana.
I meant the amendment part.
Oh, I said 1616.
No, the actual motion to amend.
I don't have that.
Let's fix it.
Okay, I'll say, "I don't have that." I move the, that ordinance 1616 be amended to add the following sentence to Section 1. The City Controller shall provide to the City Council a report monthly as the investments of the city made pursuant to the policy. Would you like to second that?
I second that.
Counselor Bell.
Do we have discussion?
You're just voting on the amendment. Well, do you want to vote?
Yeah, I don't think I got a copy of it either.
It's in with your.
Any questions from the Council on the amendment?
It was attached to the ordinance.
It's on the backside, backside of the ordinance. Doug, you're the Controller. Yes, sir. This investments report, how, how much time you think it would take for you to create monthly? Well, obviously, the first one will probably take longer, but once, once it's in, in place, it won't take long. I, I think it's probably a good measure of oversight, so. Okay, thank you, that's the only question, yeah.
Any other Councilors? Yes.
Now, are we voting on this amendment or just?
No, we're voting on the amendment.
Okay.
To put it in.
Okay.
Everybody clear? Everybody good?
Counselor Bell.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Dixon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
President Bibbs.
Yes, ordinance 1616 has been amended.
I did not have that.
I have that.
I have it now.
Yeah, 1616.
Okay.
It's for the second reading.
For the second reading? Okay, sorry, I don't have any of this, I don't, I don't have it. Mr. President, I would like to bring to the Council for second reading, ordinance 1616, please, as amended.
You learned it.
I am.
Second.
Ordinance 1616 as amended, and ordinance establishing a deposit and investment policy for the City of Anderson, Indiana, as amended.
Yes, Doug Whiteman, City Controller. As you recall from the, the prior meeting, the purpose of the policy is to provide investment objectives and guidelines for the management of public funds, to safeguard funds on behalf of the city, to assure the availability of funds when needed, to encourage investments that earn a competitive rate of return, and at all times invest according and consistent with state law. Indiana Code 5139 is amended.
Any questions for the Council?
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Controller, what, we talked briefly, or Counselor Graham had mentioned last month that, I don't know if there was a cap or a percentage of our investments that are, are allowed to be invested in other municipalities? Is there? Yes, there is a, first of all, you would have to determine under this policy that such an investment would be suitable, that you'd wanna make that investment, but even if that's determined, it's limited to 10 percent of the funds available for investment. Okay, yes, that's one of my concerns, and thank you.
Any other Councilors? Anybody from the audience? Call for the question.
Question's been called. Counselor Bell.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Dixon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
President Bibbs.
Yes, ordinance 1616 has passed its second reading.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring for the Council, ordinance 1616 as amended for its third and final reading.
Second.
Ordinance 1616 as amended, and ordinance establishing a deposit and investment policy for the City of Anderson, Indiana, as amended.
Controller Whither.
Yes, again, the policy for consideration is so that we make the best use of public funds and safeguard those funds, and I encourage you to adopt the policy, and I'll take any questions you have.
Questions from the Council? Questions from the audience? Call for the questions.
Question's been called. Counselor Bell.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Dixon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
President Bibbs.
Yes, ordinance 1616 has passed its council and awaits the consideration of the mayor. We will now move on to introduction of ordinances with first and second reading approved.
Mr. President.
Well, no, no, the first reading.
What?
On mine, it says.
It says first and second readings approved.
On mine?
Where's 17?
This is a.
Okay, that's my mess up, I don't have 17. Where's my resident, ordinance 17? I'll give it to you.
Nope.
Jennifer?
Can't read it to you yet.
It's the Public Way, it's the Public Way ordinance.
Yep.
Are you ready for that? We wait on the clerk. It's the, I think it's the vacating of the street property in Sixth Avenue.
17.
Vacating a public street.
Sixth Avenue.
I have 2026.
It shouldn't be on there at all. You guys passed that last meeting.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be on there at all.
I was like, I don't, we don't have this at all.
So, what about?
It shouldn't be on your, on your notes. No wonder I don't have it.
So, 1916 is not on there either?
16. The Public Way vacation I have is 2016.
Yes, that's the one we're on.
And that's a new ordinance.
Yep.
But 1916.
So, the first and second rea.
Your little notes are wrong.
So, the note's wrong?
Yes.
So, we can just scratch that whole section?
1716 passed three readings last month.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, I remember, 'cause I wasn't happy about it.
It's all right, it's all right.
So, we're, you remember that?
Hey, we'll get through it, it's all good.
But 1916 passed three as well? So, 1916 is good too?
Yes.
Okay, so.
There was a tax.
Now, he was here, I didn't leave.
I wanted to argue, you know? That's fine, we forgive you. You're still the best ever.
That's right.
All right, moving on.
I was telling you. You mean, this is all the letter.
Goodness.
I got tonight.
Introduction of ordinances, Ty.
Okay, moving on to introduction of ordinances, I believe, 2016.
Yep, it's really hot, I'll bring you.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's me. 20, I would like for 20 resolution, our ordinance 2016 may given this first reading.
Second.
Ordinance 2016, ordinance vacating a public street within the City of Anderson, Indiana.
Deputy Director.
Thank you, Tim Steiers, Assistant Director of Municipal Development. This proposed vacation of a public street, it's located on the south side of the city, directly south of the new Roundabout.
directly south of the new roundabout in Buffalo Wild Wings, directly west of Waffle House and Rikers. It's the area bounded by the yellow line.
Oh, that I didn't...
It consists of about .72 of an acre, about three quarters of an acre. Best way to describe this is, this is ground left over from the old Sixtieth Street, which used to sweep through here and go right along Rikers, but now with the roundabout, that road has moved over here, which left this leftover right-of-way here, which we need to vacate so that eventually, the area surrounded in blue will be the site possibly of a new restaurant.
So, where, how does the owner's Waffle House feel about that, they okay?
My understanding, no problems at all, yeah, they went through the plating process. The area in blue was platted earlier this year, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Pardon me. Area in blue was plated earlier this year, it is Lot 1 in South Applewood addition, supposedly to be the new Texas Roadhouse.
Question from the council?
Did you say they're moving Texas Roadhouse?
Yeah.
Not yet.
Yeah, that's, they will be.
Well, it's the same people who are on this program.
Oh, right, okay.
So the new, in blue, encompass, what's in that area right now?
It used to be the old Sixtieth Street, kind of swept from west to east and then rounded a curve and eventually linked up with 59th Street.
Right.
Now that that road's been relocated over here to tie into the roundabout, that left that ground no longer needed, it was no longer usable for a street, so we have to go vacate the right-of-way in order for the developer of the ground in blue, so he can move ahead with development of his proposed restaurant.
And that will be the new Roadhouse?
That's my understanding, I have myself not seen the plans, but yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Because it's, you can't even get on that road right now, and that blocked off there.
I don't believe so.
So I don't think...
That's what I was saying.
City engineer, he might be able to explain, but I don't believe so.
It's nothing.
It's useless, yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Question?
Question's been called.
Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Colt?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 2016 has passed its first reading.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to have ordinance 20-16 given its second reading.
Second?
Ordinance 20-16, an ordinance vacating a public street within the city of Anderson, Indiana. Legal notice was published in the Herald Bulletin under HB 530 on 7/28/2016.
Assistant Director?
Opened any more questions?
Any questions from the council?
Is there any relocation of utilities that needs to be done?
I would turn to the city engineer, but I don't believe so, he could speak for that.
I believe all the utilities have been relocated except the sanitary sewer, there's a sanitary sewer easement that runs through there and will remain there.
Can they build on top of that, then?
They can build with the parking lot, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just south of that, let's still, go back to that picture, you got the racetrack, right? Let's fake it. Right, so what's just south of that road there? Is that a...
South of here is I-69.
Right, 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 just in the blue, though, where we're cutting that off, there's a building there, then that right there, yeah. That's a parking lot, or?
It's an dialysis center.
Yeah, and it was like a restaurant, it was like a couple things.
Dialysis clinic, I think was the last use there, but yeah. But it was a restaurant before that, and I don't remember the name of it.
I couldn't think of it, that's why...
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Question?
Questions being called.
Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Colt?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 2016 has passed its council for, on its second reading. Moving on to introduction of resolutions.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to introduce Resolution 22-16, please.
Second? Resolution 22-16, a resolution to the Special Intern Committee on Redistricting of the Indiana General Assembly.
I'll go ahead and take this. I received this resolution from Joyce Moore, who is the education director for the Anderson chapter of the League of Women Voters, and I've been kind of following it at the state level, and I found it very interesting, and I decided to bring it towards the council, and it'll be up to the council as to whether or not we approve this resolution. I asked Mrs. Moore to come here to explain in greater detail, but from my point of view, I actually watched a special on PBS about California system, where they actually have the citizens' panels choose their districts, and I found it quite enlightening, and I know that we're kind of looking towards it for Indiana. And the statement that really jumped out to me was the fact that politicians, as this is currently designed, they pick the voters instead of the voters picking them. So, I'll leave it to Mrs. Moore to continue, but I just wanted to introduce the situation.
Nonpartisan redistricting has been a passion, yes, can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry, I knew that, I'm sorry. Joyce Moore, and I live in Anderson. Nonpartisan redistricting has been a passion for the League of Women Voters for a long time. And I think it's even more so now that we have such political division in our country, because every time we have a change, and it's around that 10-year period, it gets worse. And Madison County is a perfect example of that. We've got two state legislatures that have little slivers, one, a little sliver of Pendleton, and one has a little sliver near La Palma, in that area, between there and Noblesville. And because of this, we feel like it's more important than ever. And we've watched so many other states pass this. Particularly, a good example is California, and if you will, go on Google and Google Arnold Schwarzenegger's letter, that it was an editorial that was in the Indianapolis Star about three years ago, and he explains in that editorial about how much of a difference it made in the state of California. And he credited the League of Women Voters and Common Cause of Indiana, or of California, I'm sorry, and for helping accomplish that. And we've worked hard, and we hope that anyone considering voting against it to really question why, considering that what we're asking for is nonpartisan citizen involvement. And here today, we have with us Julia Vaughn from Common Cause Indiana, and she's also been extremely active in this.
Thank you, Joyce, and thank you, members of the Anderson City Council. It's really my pleasure to be here tonight and ask for your support of this resolution. This is a way that we're demonstrating to the members of the interim study committee the wide support across the state of Indiana that exists for a different way to do redistricting when it comes around again in 2021. It doesn't matter which party is in power, it has been used in the past for partisan purposes, and we believe that voters get left out of that conversation too often. So we are asking for your support. You will join a long line of fine cities that have already passed this resolution. It started back earlier this winter with Michigan City, followed by South Bend, followed by Lafayette, West Lafayette, Ben Sins, and most recently Valparaiso took it up on Tuesday evening. So we know a lot of legislators took, used their legislative surveys to ask their constituents if they supported in a more independent way to redistrict, and I've seen results that raised, ranged from 65% to 85% people in support. So I think this is something that Hoosiers are ready for, with the support of elected officials like yourself behind it, I think we have a much better chance of being successful. So thank you so much, Counselor Bibbs, for your leadership on this issue, and we hope you'll support the resolution. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, can you give us an ideal of who would do the redistricting?
We think the way that California does, they open it up to any citizen who is a registered voter in the state, and there are 30,000 people filled out an application. There were a group of three auditors who worked for the state who were charged with barrowing that down to eventually the 14 people who got the job. But we think they should be representative of voters, they should be diverse from an ethnic perspective, geographically, politically, we want some balance to this, because we think that we'll end up with better districts that way. It will be more about voters rather than the partisan political process.
Yeah, I agree.
Appreciate your support, thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One of the statements in the resolution indicates that you expect an increase in voter turnout?
Well, one of the things we're concerned about is that gerrymandering, one of the outcomes is an awful lot of uncontested seats in the general election. For example, in 2014, 44 of the 100 seats for the Indiana House of Representatives had only one major party candidate, and we think that impacts turnout. You know, when people have choices, they will turn out. Hoosiers have shown that, when we have competitive races, we will participate. We had the lowest voter turnout in the country in 2014, 28%. We know that redistricting reform is not the magic bullet, but we think it is an important way to spur competition, which we think will spur and help our turnout here.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Sir?
It's my understanding on this, that you are requesting that John, that John Doe, or and the rest, whoever, come up with the council districts all the way up to the congressional districts?
We're talking about state legislative and congressional district in terms of local redistricting. I know that there are, certainly in Marion County, there's been a movement to put a more independent process in place. This resolution would not address that. If that's something you feel strongly about, though, I would encourage you to add an amendment if you feel that local redistricting is a topic that would be more appropriately addressed by an independent commission.
Second part of this question is, under the assumption, we, this group comes up with an ideal scenario, who has the final stamp of approval on it?
The Indiana General Assembly. The Indiana Constitution does say the General Assembly is responsible for redistricting, so we believe to be constitutional, they have to be allowed an up or down vote on the district.
Now then, if, hypothetical, if they reject the approval of Madison County, what happens? Does this select committee down in the State House approve it again?
They would have no say-so over your local districts.
No, I'm, we're, local district, that's out of the question.
Okay.
Let's say the congressional district.
Okay. They reject it, the General Assembly says, no, we don't like what the Citizens Commission has come up with. The scenarios in the states with independent commissions is that it goes back to the commission, they try again, it goes back to the legislature. Typically, there's enough political tension that the General Assembly agrees to the independent commission's map. It has not been a problem in those states that they sort of get to a dead end, the legislature rejects it, and there's nobody then to draw the map. That hasn't happened in states with citizens' commissions.
You know the bottom line of it, any governmental wise is the ability to compromise.
You're right, you're right, and we think that this allows more of that. You know, when it's done just by the party in control, it's done behind closed doors, out of public sight, so we think one of the best things about a citizens' commission is it brings it out into the public square, really encourages public participation.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, gerrymandering really is a problem here in Indiana. I hate to refer to Donald Trump's rig, rigging, but it is rigged here right here in Indiana.
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the audience?
Any right to him? I know you and Terry Ketchel down there.
Question? Question's been called.
Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Colt?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, resolution 2216 has passed its council and awaits the consideration of the mayor.
Thank you very much.
And the president of the council, don't forget that. We've got to teach you something.
We're ready for a resolution 2316.
I'd like to introduce 2316 for its first reading. Only reading.
It's a resolution. Deputy Director?
Second.
Resolution 23-16, a preliminary declaratory resolution fixing a date, time, and place for a public hearing thereon for Eighteenth Street Development LLC.
Council President, members of the city council, before I present this, I have to pause for a second, because Councilman Dixon, I didn't think I'd ever hear you agree with Donald Trump. I'm shocked.
I don't agree with him. But he used the expression rigged, and I like that impression.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
Okay, Resolution 2316. I have the opportunity to present this to you tonight, and I do want to make sure that everyone in the audience is aware that this is a resolution requesting the fixing of a date, time, and place for a public hearing. So this isn't the public hearing, this is the process of fixing that date, time, and place. This is, appeared on your project lead sheet for two and a half years, almost three years. Started out as Project Cocoon, it's now Project Cocoon 2. So you'll see it on your lead sheet tonight, with a million, 18 million, $500,000 value attached to it. As you can see from the resolution, it's slightly more than that, it's 18,500, 18,780 and $80, 18,505, 748. So just slightly more than the 500, and then by the time we include the...
18 million?
I'm sorry, yes. 18 million. 18 million, 500, and 5,000, and there's a piece of property involved as well, which adds a little bit to that. It is 50 jobs. Average annual payroll is estimated to be approximately 2 and 1/2 million dollars. So we're looking at jobs that are in that 23 dollar, 24 dollar an hour range. This is a elder care facility that focuses on memory care. And I do have the CEO of the company here tonight, Phil Maggard, he's flown in from Denver, Colorado, to share with us a little bit about his company and their partner, which
I'm a managing director with Next Core Group, and I'm an authorized representative of the applicant, 18th Street Development. And I'm excited to be here. I get a chance to talk to the community and members of the council about this project, which is an assisted living and memory care project. And I, when we, how do we switch the slide here? Next Core Group formed a joint venture with Meridian Senior Living. And as you can see, both companies bring a lot of experience to the partnership. Next Core is one of the leaders in healthcare real estate development nationally, and Meridian Senior Living has a leadership position in both assisted living and memory care. And I want to point out that in this joint venture, that we're not just Next Core Group, the real estate guys. Next Core is providing a lion's share of the capital to this joint venture, and we will own the real estate and operations jointly. So, it's not as if I'm, we're, have plans to build something and leave the community. We'll be fully invested in the community, the real estate, and the operations. I've been working, and members of my team closely with members of city staff, and we're talking about the plans. This project has a long history. And our joint venture partnership is looking at communities like Anderson throughout the Midwest, where there's a demonstrable need for assisted living and memory care. When we look at the, where those areas are in the Midwest with the greatest amount of net support, so the greatest amount of need, we've identified those, especially in Ohio and Indiana. Those communities where there is an economic incentive opportunity, such as the area where we hope to develop this facility, those projects have risen to the top, and that's where we're spending our time right now. And I really appreciate the help that Greg has given explaining this opportunity to us. To tell you a little bit about, perhaps hard to see, but you folks know the community well, we're at, this is a, you know, way, a high aerial to understand where this site is in relation to the interstate and the exits that serve the city of Anderson. So, here is the main retail corridor, and we are just off Columbus and 67th, just off the corner. And so, to orient you here, if you get your bearings, you can see that that intersection, and we are slightly off the intersection. This facility is, will have 97 units. 70% of the units will be for assisted living. The balance will be for memory care residents. And it's, what's very interesting is that the, in the old days, seniors housing, assisted living was, was, the idea was it was more of a social model. But what's happening, and as you well know, you see it in the papers every day practically, that the older age cohort are high consumers of healthcare expenses. So, we're gravitating to be both a social model and a medical model to help seniors that need help with activities of daily living to remain as healthy as possible and to stay out of the more expensive care venues. On the memory care facility, which is, it's in the same building envelope, but it's a completely different use. This is a, well, you'll see, I'll show you a picture. It has a residential look, but it's an institutional building in terms of building type, but it's not going to appear institutional. The memory care residents, in the past, memory care residents were warehoused. They were in long, narrow corridors, and they tended to be placed in their rooms, and very often, there was no reason for them to get out of their rooms. Our operational model is completely different. Our operational model for memory care is based on the Montessori method. We call it Montessori moments. We have very wide corridors, both on the assisted living and the memory care. These wide corridors in the memory care unit are observed by staff from a central nursing station, and there are activity areas within this wide corridor. And the residents can move safely and securely within that wing and also within a secure healing garden. So, we've been working since 2015 on the prototype, borrowing best practices from Meridian's experience nationally. And what we like to say is that when we, that communities, and we're very interested and hope we can do something in Anderson, it's like bringing a iPhone to a community that has, and throughout the Midwest, it's the flip phone in terms of operating model and design solution. This is a very different operating model and design solution. Greg talked about the numbers, little over nine acres. The investment is almost $19 million. And when the facility is fully occupied, we expect to have 50 full-time employees, and that is the annual salary expectation, at least. That's what our budget looks like. And just to give you a flavor for this prototype in terms of the exterior, what we wanted to do is to use the farmhouse vernacular and to have something very classic so that it does not look institutional from the outside or even from the inside. But these elements are borrowed from the classic American farmhouse. And so, this is the look that we have in our prototype. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just two. Number one, your 50 FTEs, do they have a benefit package, health insurance and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, will you be using local contractors for construction?
As much as possible, we will.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Early in your presentation, you mentioned that sometimes the residents or patients or whatever the term would be, that you talked about a more expensive venue or, what are those venues?
What we want to do is to keep folks out of the hospital. We want to limit calls, emergency calls. And that, that's something that's very important to the healthcare delivery system. So, that's what I meant about expensive car venues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I remember very well when we rezoned just property. And I, but I don't remember how much land is there. And you're only taking nine acres. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Do you know what the total acreage is?
Um...
Out there?
69 acres? 68.
And it was very controversial, diszoning for this property. And I've not ever got over it. So, I'm, that's the only statement I'm going to say.
Any other questions from the council?
I know we're just talking about the setting up for the meeting, but do we know, Greg, about the abatements involved in this or what?
The abatement that staff is recommending for this is a five-year abatement. And I can share the numbers with you if that's helpful. So, at the current, the way that it's currently assessed, at $18.5 million, obviously, the numbers you just saw, about $300,000 more than that in land. The argument would be that the land value is already there. So, total taxes on that over a 10-year period would be $2,775,000. They would be paying with the five-year abatement, and it's a graduated abatement. They would be paying $1,601,308. They would be saving $1,173,692 out of that $2,775,000 that we're talking about.
Mr. President, is that in the five-year span?
That is.
For all five?
It is.
Total.
That's the entire, that's the entire sum over that five-year period. So, you're still $1,600,000 better having a quality amenity like this. And having, have watched my mom go through Alzheimer's, I can tell you, I wish I'd had access to an amenity like this because she didn't have that. So, I do believe it's an amenity. So, you're $1.6 million better off tax-wise with a quality amenity like this in place.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Winkle, I, this is a beautiful facility and a beautiful idea, but what I'm concerned about is our abatements. And would a facility like this consider moving here without abatements? I've been doing a little research, and there are some towns that are growing without abatements.
Yes.
Is that the only way we can get companies here?
No, it's not the only way. But rather than speak for Mr. Maggard, I'd be glad to let him answer that question. So, your question is, would a company like this be willing to come without an abatement? Correct?
Well, that's one of them. I'm just concerned about our community.
Sure.
Because when we do all these abatements, that takes away from other things. And this is what is being asked of me when I go out into the community and what their concerns are about our city is growing. But we're doing a lot to facilitate this growth. But there are communities that are growing that, that do not use the abatement as heavily as we seem to be using it.
Yes, I would agree that there certainly are. When I look at, you know, communities such as Fishers and Carmel and Noblesville and Zionsville, that's very true. My argument, logic behind this would be that we still have some holes in the fabric that we need to patch. The purpose that we're, the logic behind asking only a five-year abatement was exactly the concern that you have. In the past, we've looked at 10-year abatements for projects like this. This is a five-year abatement, so we're looking at a little less than half of what that cost would be. So, again, trying to patch holes, trying to create amenities, trying to leverage private dollars, significant dollars, and do so with as little cost and risk to the taxpayers we possibly can. And I think Bill will be glad to share with you, he brought a group of investors through the community. I believe it was, what, five weeks ago? And so, he had some input from them, and I'll let him answer the rest of the questions.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Even with the net support, the demand that we see in Anderson and communities like that, I needed Greg's help getting capital to be excited about investment in Anderson. They, and so, we think that this is going to be a great project. And as I said before, the fact that it was in a revitalization area was very important to our decision to invest time, the time to do the planning, the analysis. We've actually done some drawings to ensure that, and check on the feasibility associated with the project. So, as Greg said, there is, there has been a real benefit to the economic development, the prospect of an economic incentive here to encourage capital to invest in the project and in Anderson.
Does that answer your question, Councilwoman, or...
I didn't hear a yes or no, but I understand what he's saying.
Okay. Well, and I can tell you that one of the things that Bill and I talked about as he was bringing this group of investors to town, they were landing at the Anderson Airport.
Yeah.
And they made a journey through the community. They went through Anderson University, they visited downtown, they went back to Scatterfield, they looked at the new Purdue project, the new Alta Polina project, and the community health project that's taking place there. They went out and visited the property, and from there, visited exit 222, looked at all the activity that's taking place there, and then went on to their next prospect. So, those were people that are putting up the $18 million for this project. And we were thoughtful in the way we presented the community to them. And I will be very blunt with you, that is exactly what we do every time we bring someone to town. So, it's a process of establishing that relationship, putting an attractive package in front of them. And then after they get to know the community, their perceptions regarding Anderson grow, mature, and change. And we end up with very happy companies. But getting to that process is, there's a challenge to that. And we're reaching the point now where we have people looking at us. We have people coming in from around the country to look at us. But I would caution you, we still have some work to do when it comes to bringing people to the community, getting them to the point where they're excited about it, investing their dollars, putting those dollars at risk here in our community, and making that investment moving forward.
What?
Yes?
Councilman Bibbs. I understand what you're saying as a business perspective, but as an elected member of the community, how do I get taxpayers excited, not on the route you just took, but the route I take home, about another company coming here, getting abatements? And how do I get taxpayers excited about that?
Well, one way to get them excited about it is, you know, as we've talked about...
On that side of town.
On that, I understand.
Yeah.
And as Councilman Newman asked me earlier, what are the prospects for Edgewood Plaza? So, we have two prospects now for Edgewood Plaza. And my, my logic behind saying that this makes good sense for the taxpayer is, this project is going to provide over 10 years, $1.6 million that we don't currently have and that we won't have if they come here. If they don't come here, we won't have that. So, that's going to provide $1.6 million that can be used for a project in Edgewood Plaza or anyplace else in that Tiff district.
Okay, well, that's something.
That's, that's the logic behind this. So, that sheet that I gave you when we started the meeting, that has all of the numbers on it as far as the investments we've made. It also has the 10-year return on that investment. And as I noted, we're $23 million ahead of what we invested. You're 150% total return. So, you've not only accomplished jobs, opportunities, private capital invested in the community, but the taxpayers are receiving that return on investment that can then be used for the Edgewood Plaza types of projects in the roads and the streets that we know we all need.
Mr. President. Yes. You said, how many units were there? 97?
There are 97.
So, how many patients, I guess, how many would that, how many people is your maximum?
Maximum, 105 residents.
And the reason I'm asking that with the whole tax abatement, obviously, is, I live by a community hospital, and we go to Manor Care, there's a lot of assisted living areas. There's an ambulance or a rescue truck there every day. So, I'm looking at, you know, I understand the tax abatement. You know, you're not paying anything the first year, but if we got to make a run every day out there and then you shut down in two years, you know, that's a lot of money that we're paying for, for the, you know, the ambulance service, fire trucks, rescue, whatever it is. So, I don't know what an average run is per day in a facility like that. So, I'm just looking at, or tax dollars. You're not paying a dime, obviously, the first year it's being abated, then it's 80, 60, 40. There's an ambulance or a rescue truck there every day. So, I'm looking at, you know, I understand the tax abatement, you know, you're not paying anything the first year, but if we're going to make a run every day out there, and then you shut down in two years, you know, that's a lot of money that we're paying for, for the, you know, the ambulance service, fire trucks, rescue, whatever it is. So, I don't know what an average run is per day in a facility like that. So, I'm just looking at, or tax dollars, you're not paying a dime, obviously, the first year it's being abated, then it's eighty, sixty, forty, twenty. I'm just looking at, you know, what's an average run for a rescue truck to a facility with a hundred patients? You know, because that's obviously our dime. So, I don't know if there's a percentage or?
There's a, if there's a metric, I'm sure that the city staff knows the metric for your experience in those other facilities that you mentioned, you are familiar with in the city.
Okay. So, I, so there isn't an actual, a hundred patients at a facility like this, you may get one run a week, or there's really not an average on that?
Well, I think it's probably best to ask the facilities that are here in Anderson, because that's what you were referring to.
One of the, and we do have one of our firefighters in the back of the room.
I didn't want to put him on the spot.
We made petitions, come up and talk a little bit. But one of the things that he pointed out is that the fire department is paid for those runs.
And that was my, so question three would be?
I didn't, I didn't know that until I just heard that. So, I'll let Cody address that issue.
Yeah, Cody Lever, President, Anderson Firefighters. I was getting ready to say the exact same thing, but my understanding, this is an Alzheimer's facility, correct?
Assisted living.
Assisted living.
And memory care. So, it's both.
Yeah.
Two-thirds of it is assisted living, and then a third is memory care.
I would compare it maybe to Primrose out by you. We go there, I mean, maybe a few times a month, maybe, back when I was on in June four. But, I mean, we go to manor care, countryside manor, and stuff like that on a daily basis. But those are actual nursing homes.
Right.
So, there are some very, very sick people in there.
Sure.
And not to say that that, something like that couldn't happen there, but the main point is, we make money off of these runs, so.
You are paid for.
Right. Absolutely, yep.
Good.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
On the, you said nine, this is going to end on nine acres?
Yes.
And there are sixty-some odd acres left?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. Is this structure, is it in the, it's not in the center where there could be some more potential for growth?
Oh, no. In fact, there is, we deliberately wanted to leave an opportunity for additional development, and we deliberately moved off what we would call the hot corner, and said, leave that for other development at the actual corner. We've pushed toward the Sugar Fork, as you can see. So, there is an opportunity for other development.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Before I move on to the audience, I'd like to say that I appreciate you investing in Anderson. And in the interest of full disclosure, I remember this situation, Council Davis kind of alluded to it, I was the one that voted against rezoning this. So, I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate you investing here, and however I vote on this, it is not a representation on your establishment. We appreciate you being here, but I just wanted that to be made aware, wanted you to be made aware of-
Thank you.
-that I did vote against rezoning this.
Councilman Bibb.
Yes.
I wasn't here, what was the problem with rezoning this, if I may ask?
Um, it was a disagreement on whether or not, who the owner was of this.
Was that being resolved? I guess it has now. But?
They mean box, Dan, or something?
Was the, was aware of-
Jerry, let your name out.
Jerry Alexander. I live at 311 Edgewood Place here in Anderson. For those of you that were council members at that time, there was a lot of remonstration because of the landowners that lived close to the property, and they sort of, you know, were-
Boxed in.
Were trying to affect the decision. And in fact, the, it led to a lawsuit that was filed against me and PACT Development, and that lawsuit has been dismissed. And PACT Development does own the land, so there's no, no issues that you would have as, as Mrs. Davis says, there's no, no issues at this point. In fact, the, all of the members of PACT Development has signed a resolution to actually sell this property to this entity, including the representative of the estate and Ainsley Jo Phillips, who was a member. So, that, that resolution has been signed, giving their permission and enthusiasm. In fact, the largest recipient of the sale of this land will be the estate and Ainsley Phillips, which that, which is rightfully so. I mean, you know, they have a fifty percent interest in the development of this land, and so, obviously, they're going to get their money. But I mean, you, you guys didn't know all of that because of all of the accusations and things like that. This wasn't a court proceeding, but it has since been resolved, and the lawsuit has been dismissed.
Where's the lady at? She's still alive?
Well, there wasn't any reason for her to be here tonight because she's not opposed to this. So, and none, you know, the estate's not here, they're not opposed to it because they've already signed a resolution agreeing to this transaction.
So, has she got a place to live? At that time-
Oh, she's always had a place to live. There's never been a time-
And she was homeless.
She wasn't ever homeless. Okay, so, she's always had a place to live.
She owned the property?
Well, it's not on her own property. I mean, they sold their house, which was not a part of this property. Their house was someone else.
In other words, it's been resolved?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And take it to the bank, all is well, right?
Absolutely.
And she's going to be taken care of?
Absolutely.
Good.
All right.
That's good, but that was terrible.
All right.
That's good.
Okay.
Thanks to Jerry. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
I'm Joe Carney, 2428 North Shore Boulevard. I'm just curious if Next Corps has any other projects in Indiana, or, you know, in the works or completed?
We have acquired property in Indiana and South Bend. They were a part of a portfolio of dialysis clinics. But we are working coast to coast. We don't have anything in Indiana right now.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
This place in South Bend, did you guys get tax abatements, if you built on that?
That was an acquisition, and-
Are you going to be building on that soon?
No.
No?
No.
You're just going to have the property?
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Question?
Question's been called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Kulp?
Yes.
Councilor Graham?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
Yes, I guess.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilor Kroom?
A question, we're just voting on the public.
Kind of gave the place.
Yeah, yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
And President Bibb?
No. Ordinance Resolution 2316 has passed this council and a waste of consideration of the mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move it to Biscayna's business, I'll skip ahead. I want to thank Councilor Davis, she's been our Health Commission member, she's worked hard, and she's decided to take a little break, and she's going to give it over to Councilor Graham. So, I just want to thank you for doing the job, and I want to thank you for accepting the job.
Do you want to do it by unanimous consent, or?
We'll do it by unanimous consent, for me.
Aggregates consent.
And then also, due to the circumstance of us having five new members, and if you include myself, six, with only one term in, the council thought it was prudent to discuss the possibility of maybe having a legal consultant and a budget consultant. Councilor Graham volunteered to look into the budget consultant possibly, and through the lens of trying to obtain the read-only, Councilor Cruz was looking into possibly a legal consultant. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilor Graham, just to make sure everybody understands with the public what the discussions were.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was determined by members of the council that, as the president said, four brand-new members.
Five.
Five, actually, I'm back after twenty years, that perhaps it might be good for the council to have a representative to the budget hearings. Now, I wanted to be clear in stating that this was in no way any concern about a brand-new controller. That was never discussed. I think the council has very much confidence in you as controller, and I do want you to know that. But it was thought with the new members that it might be helpful that we had a budget, a skilled budget consultant, because this is a complicated business. General fund budget's going to be thirty-some million dollars, I suspect, and it is probably the council's biggest and most important task that it does. It may be the only task legally we're required to complete. It's that way at the legislature, I think. So, we talked a little bit about whom that might be, how we would go about that, and we made a call to Jim Steele, who was former controller for the city of Anderson during the McMahon administrations. He was a controller to the city of Indianapolis for some period of time, and he has worked with both local administrations, both Democrats and Republicans. I was part of the Occam administration, and we hired Jim when we were during, in the middle of the huge financial crisis of 2008 and 2009. I personally consider Jim to be the gold standard of consultants. And so, I had a nice chat with Jim, but he said, you know, if I was up there, I'd be glad to do it. But he has just been appointed the town manager of Fort Myers Beach, Florida. And so, I couldn't quite entice him to come back up. And of course, the thought did occur that we could take the budget hearings to Fort Myers Beach, but I didn't think that would float either. So, I talked to Jim, reported back to the president. He said, well, did you happen to ask Jim if he had anyone he would recommend? I said, I did not, called him back, he made a recommendation. We followed up with that person. And we asked, the president called members of the council, and received, you know, advice from them, and we did receive one proposal. I think we've had discussion about that, and that's pretty much where we're at, whether or not we should seek some other proposals, consider other persons. We can do that as long as budget hearings begin next Wednesday. And so, we are on a deadline. But the council had discussed that a little bit in public, and we wanted to give everyone in the community a report on where we were at with that. So, that's my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, sir, and I appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you.
When we left last meeting, at the very end, we gave unanimous consent from the council for Councilor Kroom to possibly look into getting a ordinance requiring the administration to give us read-only. There was a development with that at six o'clock or so, but Councilor Kroom started the process, so I will let her finish the process and take care of it.
What, you say there was a development?
The letter that I gave you.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to go through the process of how we got here.
Well, I'm still working on getting a read-only access into Gateway. I guess I have a question for our controller, Mr. Witham here. I received a letter before council meeting. Do you know, do you have a copy of this?
I have not seen a copy of the letter yet.
You have not?
No, I have not. It is my understanding that the read-only access is going to be given to any counselor who wants it, subject to a yet-to-be-drafted signing, a yet-to-be-drafted user agreement, maintaining confidentiality of passwords and other pertinent information.
Right. Well, this letter here, did she give you a copy of it?
Yes.
It says, "Subject to your legally authorized discretion." So, am I to assume that is only if you agree to give the password?
Yes. Well, I think what, I think the bottom line is, the counselors will be given read-only access as long as they will be willing to sign a yet-to-be-drafted-
I understand that.
Use agreement, right. That's, that's the bottom line, I think, of all of this.
Okay, so, do we need someone to draft it, or Mr. Lannan?
No.
Is he going to be able to draft it?
The city attorney will draft it, yeah.
Now, do we have some timelines on this? Are you going to be here, Mr. Lannan? When do you expect to have this ready? Because it's been like three, four, what, what's the date on this? May? I've been working on this since May.
Yeah, I expect to be able to draft it in the next day or so.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, just forget that last correspondence we had.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Witham?
Yes.
You said yet-to-be-drafted user agreement. Now, I know one comes with the disclaimer comes with the original form, are you going to be adding some more information to it? Which I have no problem with that.
It may be modified somewhat. I haven't had a chance, I've looked at what's on the website itself, but I may want to modify it just slightly, somewhat.
Well, I have no problem with that.
It shouldn't take too long.
Okay. And you're saying that you're absolutely going to give council access if they sign this agreement?
Yes, right. Read-only access. Yes.
Okay. And we can look at this within the next couple of days, you say, or a week, or whatever? Okay.
Any other discussions on any topic?
I have one more, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President. Mr. Controller?
Yes, ma'am.
This has to do with the upcoming budget. We received the list of all of the programs, I guess you want to call them, for lack of a better term, that are going to be covered in their budgets. One of the things that council had discussed, I don't know, a month or so ago, was the TV budget, and now there is not for Anderson Television. Are we not going to be budgeting for Anderson Television? And if not, why not? And where does that money come from?
Well, I think that's probably best left to the budget hearings, but I don't think that that has been budgeted for in the past.
It has not.
Right.
But we, you know, we had talked about, I don't know, a couple of months ago, was that, you know, we would like to see it continue to grow and continue, because, I mean, I just had somebody the other day said that they were watching the council meetings on Anderson Television, somebody that I would have never expected to, it was kind of out of nowhere. And so, I guess I just am wondering, why, why are we not, why is not something specifically set up for, for this?
Right, there, yeah, there's not a separate budget for it, I know that-
I know there's not. Why is there not?
Right, no, well, I think that because at this point, it's been handled from other budgets, I know that we've paid some expenses out of the controller's budget even-
Mm-hmm.
-related to this. So, you know, that, that has not been brought up as we've addressed these with the departments as far as establishing a separate budget for the television.
Is that something that we could do?
No, we can look at that.
I would like that, because I think it's something that's very important for the city.
There's something we can do, we can write an ordinance, can we not? Require to have a TV- We can write an ordinance, can we not, requiring to have a TV?
In the budget?
Well, we can require that we have it, and then it's going to come out somebody's budget.
I guess I would say to that, I mean, the council is going to have its opportunity to make its, you know, desires and positions known and so forth as we go through that budget process. So I really think it's probably better left at that time.
I might add that years ago Comcast used to, now I'm talking years ago, because I've been on here for a while, used to have it live. They used to bring their camera down and have it live on TV, and we actually had a Cablevision committee.
We still do, actually.
And that's been a long time ago. Greg will remember that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Insight, yeah.
Then for years, we went without TV, and then Kevin Smith brought it back, and I really don't know how it's funded.
Right, and that's, I think that's, I think that's what I'm trying to bring up, is that we need, yeah, we need to-
I think they hired certain people out of different departments.
Right, and it needs to be, if it's something that's going to continue to grow and continue to be important-
I don't think it costs very much, because they try to put something on that's four or five hours long, and just roll it around and roll it around.
But we've talked about doing more with other, I mean, we've got other city meetings.
Well, I don't think it costs that much, but there's no reason for you not to have your question answered.
No, that's right.
Mr. President? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead. And in reference to the first topic we discussed in budget hearings, if it's significant enough for us to have a representative, I'm questioning why we are going to participate in budget hearings without a representative lined up and ready. It doesn't seem that if we were able to put off those budget hearings with a four-day notice and interfere in calendars that are already set, then why are we going to, and we need, I don't know who needed the extra week, administration or controller or other department heads, but if we need a representative, why are we going to begin budget hearings without a representative? And whose responsibility is it to schedule those budget hearings? I mean, is it, is it the mayor's responsibility? Is it the controller's responsibility? Is it?
Ours?
All of us?
All of you, bud.
Well, normally, normally it's the administration's budget.
Yeah.
And so normally, my experience has been that the administration sets the times for those hearings. That's my recollection.
Why was it rescheduled? Anyone?
I don't know.
Well, they're here, ask them.
Anyone?
Right, I think mainly, I think mainly it's because of the fact that the newness of the entire administration, we wanted just to take the time and deliberate some important projects and make sure that we got things right for the proposal that would be forthcoming.
How was that date set? Because like John said, it was four days, and I mean, I mean, I know I wasn't asked if that was convenient, so I didn't know.
Right, we operated off, we initially looked at and tried to operate off of a schedule that was used by our predecessors. We determined that we needed a little more time to deliberate some projects and get things right and make sure that we put forth the best possible proposal to the council.
Yeah, I guess my point is, is that, two points. One, we feel that it's significant enough to have a representative there, or to have a representative, and we're willing to pay a significant amount of money, but we're going to begin this process without that person. That doesn't, that doesn't seem logical. And the second point is, is that they were, there was a schedule put out two or three months ago, and in four days or five days before the hearing, the date was changed. And now there's conflicts for me personally, so that's why this is, I'm recognizing this. I think that's inadequate. Before the significant level or the high level of responsibility, I get a four-day notice, it's disheartening.
Mr., excuse me here. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think that the benefit of the audience, as well as the council, even to refresh my memory, what's the timeline of the hearings? Let's see, up in 501 or over here in Economic Development Roundtable Discussions? What's the time element that we finally pass it for the third reading before it goes over to someplace else?
Right, we need to have the first and second readings in the September council meeting, and then the third reading and final reading would be in the October meeting, so that we meet the timelines as laid out by DLGF and others.
But we also have to have it uploaded to Gateway by the end of this month.
Yes, we do. That's a very good point, sir. We do need to make sure that it gets advertised 10 days in advance, which really is 11 days as it kind of lays out on the calendar in Gateway to the public. So that's why time is somewhat of the essence on holding these budget hearings and meetings, budget meetings.
What, where I was going with this question for the controller? Maybe there is, or maybe there isn't a need for an outside consultant in this. We have, we have 10 days before the third reading, or the end of the month.
I just stated, Mr. President, that schedule you had released, I think it says, does it say August 26th?
August 26th.
August 26th is when it needs to be uploaded into Gateway, according to that schedule. Does that sound about right?
Right. That sounds about right. Okay. 25th, 26th, right in there, yes.
So, I mean, it would appear to me we have some time before that has to be done.
Right. We, you know, obviously, in the event that there's any, you know, changes-
Yeah.
...that are made to the budget because of the deliberations and so forth, we would probably need a little more time anyway to, you know, take care of that and get things prepared for everybody.
President, be it. Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes, sir.
What time would you be available? Was there any consensus or thought given to a timetable so all of the council, all of those that's going to be involved could be here? Like he said, he was given four days-
Well, we certainly didn't try to cause anyone problems, but we did select a couple of dates and sent them out. I think, you know, a lot of times if you get into asking everybody for their best available time, then you run into, you know, kind of a nightmare there and problems in trying to get things scheduled.
Yeah, I understand that too, but like, I just like, Councilman Bell said, I was short-changed, and I wasn't even informed. I didn't know that he was going to be canceled. And it has interrupted his schedule, vacation or whatever.
It's, you know, it's a pretty important event-
Yeah.
-that it's going to take some time and take me away from the area, so I, you know, I can't miss that. So it's going to put me in a position where I've got to meet with, as I've indicated you in an email-
Yes.
I plan on meeting with department heads. I want to meet with you, you know, what, just to get the general flavor of where you want to go with the budget.
Right. We can work that out. I mean, and that can be worked out.
There's nine of us on the council, and you just can't work around everybody's schedule. We normally, I'm saying this because I'm the oldest one here, that we normally try to pick a date and let everybody know months in advance when we're going to do our budget hearings.
We did. We did have that.
And then they were changed. That's right. They were changed. I mean, they changed them this year.
Yes.
And I knew that that was going to upset some people, because they, I used to take my vacations around the budget hearings. I always made sure I was here during budget hearings. I knew that that would cause problems. We're always going to have that problem. But if you can work out something with the controller-
We do apologize for the inconvenience, but, yes, we would like to work something out, because we want you to be a part of the process, obviously.
Thank you. And for the record, it's not a vacation. It's-
Yours is vacation?
I'll be working while I'm out of the area.
Really, you don't know that's an explanation, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bev?
Ask for a private meeting, I think.
Yes.
I have one more thing to say to Mr. Witham. This Gateway read-only, you said, now, if there are any more people on here, you have to have, is everyone going to be signing this extra legislation that you're drafting up?
Yeah, it's just a policy, a use policy. If, for any counselor who wants the access-
Right, I understand that, but for-
They'll sign the policy.
For those that are on it now, because I, when I called a couple of days after I gave you all this information, you know, when you said you didn't know nothing about it? They said that you had put Mr. Ikes on there, so has he signed, will he be signing this?
He has not signed that, because it hasn't been drafted.
But he is on the read-only, according to the state. I got that information from the state.
Yes.
So he's on there without signing anything, other than the form that we use.
Right.
Okay, just to make that clear.
Any other?
Just one. When you said that can be worked out, to Councilman Bell, are you talking about the opportunity to move the council budget hearings a week, or what are you thinking here?
No, I was, I was trying to work something out with him personally, so that he could, you know, get the input, the flavor and so forth that he was requesting.
Review the budget with him, that's what my understanding was, right? You wanted him to review the budget with you?
I wanted a general direction in what the administration wanted to do with the budget, so that when I looked at-
I don't see why that can't be worked out.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it can be.
As I'd heard from each department head and made comparisons from previous year's budgets and anticipated tax draws and things like that.
Add all that.
Right. Yeah, we really do not want to move the meetings again, and again, we apologize. We felt that it was necessary in the best interest of developing the best possible budget, but yes, we would. The door's open.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Any other comments?
This is to you. I'm not clear on this budget consultant. Are we going to have one or not?
Well, I don't think we, you know, it's my understanding that the consensus the council was is we wanted one.
Okay.
Because of the reasons we discussed earlier.
Okay.
Now, if the consensus of the council has changed, then we're going to-
I just got lost in the-
No, I understand. I understand.
So where are we at on that? What's next?
Is it something that's going to, is it something that has to be done?
Well, tonight there were some new names that surfaced.
Oh, okay, so you're going to-
We can, if that's the wish of the council, I'll call those folks.
I'm just saying, are you going to take care of that after the meeting to check into that?
Well, if that's the wish of the council, I'd be glad to.
Well, President Bev, where are we at on that?
You had stepped out.
Oh, okay, I missed, yeah, okay.
So we got it taken care of.
Oh, all right.
We have what taken care of?
Continuing the process.
Of deciding on different names other than the one that's been brought up?
On trying to get a consultant. We want a consultant, but we want to make sure we follow our protocols and do so in a timely manner that we can try to have something together by Wednesday.
When you said she stepped out, she stepped out of what?
Of a caucus.
Caucus.
That we were not invited to, just want to make sure we got it.
Don't feel bad.
Okay.
It's a caucus.
I got it. I know, I understand. I got it. I got it.
Actually, you all had the first caucus.
I got it. I just want to make sure.
Greg has something he's got to tell you, too, about Wednesday night.
Any other questions?
Don't you, Greg?
Other questions?
Nope. Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
You got it?
8:45, gotcha.